I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance as we honor our nation?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a need to amend the agenda. We need to remove from the agenda the memorandum of understanding with the Wayne Teachers Association. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda? Carla, a second? Bam. Any discussion? All in favor? Now can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? Bam. Carrie, for a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. At this point, we have an opportunity for public comment. We welcome a comment from our public. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board at this time? If not, then let's go on to board member comments. Do we have any board member comments at this time?
I just wanted to express thanks to both operations management and transportation this week, especially now that winter has started, being able to have things plowed early and getting the kids to improve school and the weather in a safe and timely manner. Just really appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Do we have any other board member comments at this point? If not, then let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board, community. We have a couple of great things we're going to start out with and just district highlights. First of all, I just want to kind of recognize several of our middle school students and families who really did some nice things recently in the community. The Wayne Central Middle School students recently were assigned a family-centered service learning project through their health and family science classes. Through this project, students were asked to do a task with a family member or a friend that involved volunteering together for an organization or individuals in need and learning an important skill from that person or serving them by doing chores or special projects. And I'd like to really highlight a few projects that students that really, my feeling has gone truly above and beyond. One student was Jake Keller, and Jake connected with his neighbor, Pat White, who does gardening for hospice, a house, pines of peace. Jake helped Pat maintain and weed the gardens and pines at Pines of Peace and also helped her clean up some of their elderly neighbors' gardens. After the first day of working with Pat, Jake was offered a job there, by the way, at the Pines of Peace, where he also accepted, by the way. And he shares that he learned from this project that when you're working, you can truly make friends. Making others happy makes him happy, he says as well. So Jake really wanted to just say congratulations and good job, by the way. And then also, we had Grace Casca and Megan Cohen, I hope I'm saying this name correctly, last name, both joined together with their mothers to cook breakfast for families at the Ronald McDonald House in Rochester. They bought all of the groceries and then they made, get this, German pancakes, scrambled eggs, sausage, my favorite, and also baked apples. And then after talking with families at the Ronald McDonald House, Grace learned that she should not take things for granted, she says. And Megan also shared that she learned that you don't need a reason to care for other people, and it's just something that you really should do. Both girls enjoyed spending their time with their mothers as well, and it was just, it was great to hear about these service projects that our kids were doing in the middle school. So really proud of those two kids. And then while we're highlighting the middle school, I just want to also congratulate our middle school students who were recently in The Lion King, I'm not sure how many were able to make it, but Boy, what a great show. The kids put their heart into it, and it was a great production opening night. It was really great to just be there. And, you know, we're going between wrestling and going over to The Lion King. It was, you know, all across the district, our kids were just doing some really fantastic things. So I just wanted to highlight all of our students for the great things that they've been doing and that they continue to do, basically. And with that said, I'd like to kind of just move through a couple of things just for a quick moment. The first thing, Board, I want to just talk with you about is going back to this study that we talked about, our comprehensive study. Later in tonight's meeting, I'm going to ask that you approve, recommending that you approve, two more portions of the study. The first portion is the transportation. That's, I think, option or number four in the study, the fourth piece that would be done. And this would be ran by three consultants, Mark Walsh, who is the one gentleman I mentioned that is, happens to be a local gentleman as well, Christopher Andrews, and Louis Borfrendy, I hope I said that correctly. All three will be coming in, if approved, to really look at our transportation. In particular, their scope is going to be looking at, you know, the labor that we utilize, the cost of the labor, making sure we're looking at efficiencies around labor. They'll be looking at our transportation policies and procedures to make sure that they're current with current law, our program operations, how we're doing in terms of operations around our transportation program, maintenance, the fiscal pieces that are involved around transportation. They will have a look at our fleet and make sure that we're, you know, replenishing the fleet like we're supposed to be. They'll look at our facilities and give us feedback around, do we have everything we need in our facilities? And then the management staffing, and they'll take some time looking at our routing efficiencies. They'll analyze to see, are we doing well with regard to our routes, basically? And then in terms of the timeline that they have proposed, they're looking at really around between February and June, most of the work though would be starting in March. So by February, what they'd like is to have approval of what I'm asking you to approve tonight, basically, they want to have an approval. And then in March, they'd like to do an issuance of data collection instruments, so they will be talking with district staff about the data that they need to collect, and they'll put that out with us so that we can collect all the data. And then in April, what they'd like to do is have all the data submitted by the end of April. Between April and May, do an onsite visit, and they'll actually work with our transportation staff and learn a lot about their practice face-to-face during those months. And then May to June, they'll have their initial recommendations and then the final report available in June 2016. Total cost, I think in our recommendation, I showed you about $10,000. They're looking at about $10,500 total when everything is done. And again, it is Bosie's Adbal, so 70% of that would be ran through our Bosie's Cours to be able to do that. And then the second part of the study is the piece that we had suggested through SES Study Team. There are three people that we're going to look at. Originally, I brought you five names, but we believe we can do it with three. And the three that would be, we would be working with is Dr. Paul Saversky. He is a gentleman who was a former Bosie Superintendent for the Madison-on-Tana area. Then there's Mr. Doug Exley, who was also a former superintendent, and Mr. Sam Shavat. Sam was former superintendent in the Capital Region of Bosie's, basically. And so this team, in terms of their study, they would like to answer a proposal question. And that question is, are there options that might provide more cost-effective ways or patterns to organize how the pre-K through 12 program is implemented and delivered over the next three years here at Wayne? They will be really breaking their study down into four different areas. The first phase, step A, would be really doing a planning for the future workshop with the board and the superintendent. So they would come in, sit down, and go over the scope of their project and make sure that everything that the board would like to see included in that project is there. And then they will basically plan a workshop around it for the board of everything they're going to look at, how they're going to look at it, so that the board and the community will know what's happening. They'll come to a board meeting to do that. And then the second phase of their study would involve a data and preparation of the findings of the study. So they will now really go through, pull all the data that they need around enrollment, school building capacity, you know, how we're doing with our staffing, you know, they will look at, you know, all of our information around districting. They'll pull a number of data sets in terms of census data. They will also prepare a report to identify options for more cost-effective ways to serve our students. So they'll look at all different areas in terms of Phase Two. Phase Three, they will now report the findings to the school community and the school district community as well. And they'll help the district to use the findings as a tool for future decision-maings, future decision-making, excuse me. So, you know, they'll really spend time to go through that data, report it to you, and then whatever way the board wishes to go, they're there to support. They are not a group that comes in and says, you should do, you have to do this, this, or that. They will just present findings from their data that they've learned, and it would be up to the board to decide which direction we'd like to go in next, basically. And then lastly, as stage four, or phase four, because we really value input from our community as we move forward, please know that they will also be spending time with the community, and they would like to bring some stakeholders together in a focus group and really talk through different issues that might come up throughout the data to see where the community is and see how their feeling is with everything that we learned from the study. The goal is to really make sure that the community is very involved as we move forward. We want to be not only transparent, but really involved to the greatest extent possible. So there is a focus group. It's difficult to see on this screen here, but they would like to have at least 30 to 40 people and really try to cover everyone from parents to faculty and staff to community members, general community leaders, you know, union representatives, as many people as we can get to be a part of that focus group and discussion, we'd like to have that. And then, this is their proposed timeline. What they're thinking is they'd like to start in February, again, planning for the future workshops, so that would be sometime next month. And then March, enrollment projection study and pupil capacity study preparation, they would start that piece. Then they'll start their visits to the district in April. May, publish information around enrollment projections, demographic study, and the pupil capacity analysis study. And then in June, they will invite community members to come together and be a part of their community focus group. And then early July, hopefully very early, late June, early July, they would like the study team to host and facilitate the work of the community focus group. So we should be offset with them by July. The cost is a little bit less than what I shared with you the last time. I talked about between $25,000 and $30,000. Well, they believe that they will be able to do this for $25,000 or less. So the cost is $5,000 cheaper. And again, it is Bosie's Adbal. So when you're all done, I think with the Bosie's Adbal, last week we talked about 13.5 as the total cost, now we're down to about 11.5, 11.6. So that is the SES study piece, okay? All right. So any questions about that, Board, before we move forward? Any feedback or anything else that anyone would like to know more about? All right. All right. Just moving forward, also, we'd like to, tonight, you have, as one of the things that we'd like to have a vote on tonight, is the administrator's extension to their contract. We have finished the negotiations. The, there is no real huge major increase there. Their level will stay the same from year to year, 2.5, 2.5, about two more years. And basically, you know, the one thing that we did pull out of their contract was the conferences piece going to international conferences. So the contract is pretty much keeping them where they're at in terms of their health cost contributions. Please know that they have, over the last couple of years, contributed much more in terms of healthcare. They're now down to 80%, which is much more than where they were a couple of years ago. And again, their increase would be at 2.5% over the next two years. So that is on the piece later to vote on in the meeting. Board, I'd also like to invite you all, if there are several of you that might be interested. We have some committees going. We have an athletic piece that, looking at our code of conduct right now, you may know you're involved in that piece. We have a safety piece that I know Phil's on that committee, and I know a number of you have done a lot. Tim has been working with us around negotiations, and we have three more opportunities. Soon, in March, we'll start strategic planning, and so we do need at least one board member to be a part of that process. So if you'd be interested, please, we'd love to have you there and help us as we move with the other stakeholders along and creating our strategic plan for the next couple of years. The second piece, we have a wellness committee. By law, we have to have a wellness committee for our students where we are, as a part of the whole Obama legislation, we are really looking at how we can not only have kids who are eating very well, but they're thinking and living wellness each and every day. And so what we have to have is a committee that we've put together that involves parents and students, our food nutrition staff, staff from the building, and board members, basically, to continue to look at ways that we can have healthy and well kids. So if you'd be interested in doing that, the commitment is basically, once a month, there will be a meeting with the wellness committee, and if you can make it, we'd love to have you be a part of that. And then our code of conduct, soon we will start to look at that for the next school year. We have currently the athletics code of conduct that we're looking at right now, so as we move forward, we'll tell you more about our code of conduct. As over the summer, we're going to spend some time looking at the regular district code of conduct. So if you're interested, we'd love to have you be a part of it. All right. So moving ahead now, we have a brief presentation. Mike is here tonight, Mike Pullen, Mr. Pullen, and Mrs. Dambito are here. At the high school, we would like to do some changes with, two of our courses, Board, we'd like to share with you briefly about those two changes tonight. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pullen and Ms. Dambito.
Hello. Tracy and I are here tonight to ask for your approval and your consideration for two things. One, we're going to ask for a change in name from webpage design to graphic design two. We feel like that course name change really will reflect the work that the students are already doing in there, and we're hoping to cast a wider net, draw more students in for the course. And second, we're going to ask you to consider Gemini Personal Money Management, which is basically a college-level course similar to our finance tech, which you all know is local requirement here at Wayne Central. So tonight, we're going to walk you through those course offerings and the change in name, and we're hoping that with your consideration and approval to add that to our repertoire, and if we are lucky enough to receive that course approval, we'll be up to 11 Gemini course offerings for our students. And you will recall that a few years ago, FLCC lowered the price per credit down to $5 per credit. So with the $15 per course offering, several of our students go out and receive college credit and enter in either as a second semester freshman or a second-year student. So that's a significant savings as parents and students try to save and figure out ways to, you know, finance college costs. The other part that we really are looking at is, last year, we had 45% of our students go into a two-year program, so this really is going to meet our target audience. And then lastly, a few years ago, we approached the Board of Ed with a new Gemini math offering. This is very complimentary to that math offering, and there are a lot of concepts that marry together nicely and really should support our students' background knowledge in moving them forward. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy and let her walk you through some of the proposal, and then we'll take questions at the end.
Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm going to start out by sharing with you the business department mission statement. So this statement, the department created two years ago as a way to provide some direction and unity among the department. We all have posters of the mission statement hanging on the walls in either our classrooms or our offices, and there are two phrases that I highlighted for you and read today, and I did that purposely because they really speak to the two proposals that I'm going to discuss with you this evening. Give me a second to read through that. So this is a current listing of the courses that we have in the business department. We have 11, and as Mr. Pullen said, our goal is to raise that to 12 by the end of our presentation this evening. It's important to note that two of the classes within our department, so finance technology and the 40-hour internship, are both requirements for all students under the career and citizen graduation requirements. And then, again, I highlighted some things in red, and those are just the two proposals that we're going to speak to you about today, so you could see where they fell in alignment with the breakdown of the courses that we currently offer.
Say that again, Tracy. Which ones are mandated?
Finance technology, which is in that first accounting finance stream, and then the 40-hour internship. Those are part of the career and citizen graduation requirements that were adopted under the Model Schools Initiative.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to give you a little background, how did we come to this? In October, myself and four members of the business department attended the annual New York State Business Teachers Association Conference, and it was held in Syracuse this year. It moves around from city to city, and it was really a great opportunity for the five of us to sit and network with other individuals that are business teachers, you know, locally and then in other parts of the state. And we came back with a lot of great ideas that we wanted to implement. And really, the first one when we looked at our list was to offer a class to students that allowed them to earn college credit within the business department, because we didn't currently have that. So we were really excited to do that, but we felt it was important to make sure we would have student interest, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to, you know, put a proposal forward and then not have student interest. So we created a quick five-question survey, and we gave it to students, and our goal for the survey was threefold. We wanted to assess whether or not students had an interest in taking a Gemini business class. We also wanted to assess student trends in taking Gemini business classes, because we felt like we heard that students were doing a lot of it, but we wanted to make sure that that was actually accurate. And then we also wanted to see if students would have an interest in taking that finance technology class, which is a requirement for college credit, so they could kind of double-dip on credit. And that really led me to today. So our first proposal is to add the Gemini Personal Money Management course to the department. In our findings with our survey, we found that 77% of the students surveyed expressed interest in taking a Gemini business class. Of that same group of students, 73% of them expressed interest in taking the finance technology class for college credit. And I think it's important to note that right now, the personal money management course really mirrors what we're doing in the finance technology class. And in a second, you'll have an opportunity to look at the units, but it mirrors what we're already doing. So it seems to be a great marriage of giving students an opportunity to earn a graduation requirement and also earn college credit. So if we were to move forward with the proposal, they would earn half of elective credit and fulfill a graduation requirement, and then also earn three credits of FLC credit. And then the second proposal, we'll discuss, as Mr. Pullen talked a little bit about, is changing the name of a current course, our webpage design class, to graphic design two. So I'm going to start talking about Gemini Personal Money Management. So on the screen is the course description. You also should have had that in your board packet if it's easier to read from there. Again, what I've highlighted and read is kind of the key component of that course. And basically, this course is looking at teaching students how to manage their money over their lifetime. So how to make big and large or big and small purchases, you know, should, what type of investment should they do? How do they open a checking account? Just all sorts of things that are life skills that they're going to use every day for the rest of their life. One piece that I do want to point out that I think you'll find interesting is, in our finance technology class, while we teach students all of the content, we at the same time are teaching them how to use the Microsoft Office Suite appropriately, so how to use those programs appropriately. And then this year, because we've started the Google initiative throughout the district, they're learning how to use the Google programs as well. And that really is above and beyond the course expectations for the Gemini class, and that is something we would continue to do because we feel that that's important for students to understand. So just to speak again, while we believe this is a good fit for our department, we think that it, or we know that it mirrors the objectives that we're currently doing in finance tech. There are two units in the Gemini course that go slightly more in-depth than what we're currently doing, so that would be a modification we would make to our curriculum. And the technology piece that we're doing is above and beyond the FLCC requirements. We also like the idea of giving students an opportunity to have those double benefits, so to fulfill a graduation requirement and also earn college credit. And then lastly, and this was again another piece we brought back from that conference, is we really started, and a couple of us sat in on a seminar about working towards the CTE endorsement, the Career and Technical Education endorsement for our department. However, the first thing we noticed is we're not even eligible to go down that path for that endorsement, because we don't currently have a college-level class within the department. So by implementing this class, it would give us an opportunity to explore that endorsement over the course of the next year or two. Here's a list of the topics that would be covered in the Gemini curriculum. Again, there's a more detailed with different bullet points under each unit in your packet. Unit three and unit five are those two units that I talked about that, under the FLCC requirements, we would have to go a little more in-depth than what we're currently doing. We don't see that as an issue or, you know, something that's going to cause a problem within the timeframe of the semester. And again, I just noted that alongside that, we'll be doing the Microsoft Office Suite and Google.
So this is going to be a replacement?
Eventually, we're hoping that it will replace it, yes.
That's what you're looking to?
We're hopeful, yes. So we'll offer, you know...
You wouldn't have both.
We would initially, and then our hope is that, yes, it would phase out the finance tech and this would replace it. So I also think it's important to note that FLCC mandates, we need to purchase a textbook, which I brought with me, so this is what it looks like. It's called Personal Finance. Our expect, or our goal is to order two class sets, so our classes max out at 25, so we would be looking to purchase 50 textbooks. They would stay in the classrooms, and they would be used for vocabulary throughout units and then just different assignments and activities that the teachers would do throughout the semester-long course. Moving on to our second proposal, that is the name change, so changing webpage design, which is a course that we currently offer, and changing that to graphic design two. And we really feel that this is important, because we have had a ton of students express interest in taking another graphic design. You have graphic design, how come you don't have a two, or what can I take after that? And our response is always, well, webpage design, because you use pretty, you know, many of the same programs, you do one unit of HTML code, and really, the backdrop is organizing a website, and students don't seem to buy that. They're like, oh, no, she's not being honest with me. And we're like, no, really? We have this conversation repeatedly, all of us do. So we really felt that it was appropriate for us to seek out this name change, so that students really are taking advantage of this opportunity that they want and have. And really, our hope is that they recognize that the concepts they're learning in graphic design are also applied in computer programming, in webpage design, and that, you know, that aesthetic appeal and all those things that they talk about in graphic design also apply to webpage design. And so that's really our desire and our want for making that name change, is we just think it'll help clear up some of the confusion and ultimately, it'll help with the enrollment. Obviously, it's very important that anytime we're looking at anything for our department, that we bring it back to our standards. So the Gemini Personal Money Management course and then the name change would allow all those courses to meet our CDOF standards, and then the Personal Money Management course would allow the opportunity to meet some of the Common Core learning standards in both English and math, and then the graphic design would allow some of the ELA standards, the Common Core ELA standards for that course. And lastly, as an elective area, our first goal is always to increase our enrollment. That's really a focus for us, and we believe that these proposals will do just that. Our hope is that by offering the Gemini Personal Money Management course, students will look to take that graduation requirement as sophomores and juniors as opposed to seniors. And if we can get them in our department earlier, we can expose them to all the other courses, those 11 other courses that I shared with you, and really get the enrollment in those other courses to continue to grow as well. And then, as I spoke about with that graphic design and that name change, they're really shying away from that course, because they're fearful that it's not what we say it is. So we think that that's just kind of a natural occurrence, and all of that coupled together will increase the enrollment within the department.
So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
You're going to show them how to balance a checkbook.
We are, yes.
Everybody does it online, but...
And that's a piece that we do as well. We've, you know, as technology has changed, so has the curriculum in that personal finance class.
No more check registers.
No more check registers, yep.
I just had a couple, Tracy.
Sure.
Do your free and reduced kids have to still pay the Gemini fee?
I don't know that answer off the top of my head.
Okay. I just wondered. I know it's only $15, but I just wondered. And so you're saying you're going to offer this twice, two classes per semester, that's roughly 100 kids, and that will get, as you implement that, that would give an opportunity for all the kids who may be 10, 11, 12th grade to take advantage of this, should they want to?
Right. And so our thinking is that when students realize that it's essentially the same course as finance tech, but you are going to earn college credit, that they'll see that that makes sense for them to do. So we see it as eventually, over time, replacing that finance technology course, but at the same time, we don't, you know, we can't, we're not at a point where we feel like we want to mandate that you have to take that Gemini class. We still want that to be a choice, as all of the other Gemini offerings are a choice for students, so they can take Gemini Health or they could take regular Health.
And staffing?
It shouldn't be an issue.
And does Judge Ninfos still come?
He does, yes.
My daughters still talk about that.
Really? I will share that with the teachers. They'll be excited to hear that. Yes, he came.
They drills into the... They drills into the back of their head when they use that plastic thing.
Uh-huh. He came, I think it was the second week of December.
Ashes Kinga?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bankruptcy, Doctor, or Judge Bankruptcy, yes.
This seems like a win-win for everybody, Tracy, for students who wish to have a Gemini course as well as for the department, so, very positive.
We're excited.
Just two things that I know haven't been covered yet. We have budgeted for the textbooks, so we're, we're good with that. And then, we've also got an allotment for staff development. So, District Office has been very supportive with those two things, so we're in good shape.
But do those books run as college books? Does the school get a better price than...
No, unfortunately, we don't.
Is it used? International version?
We'll, we'll buy the addition and, you know, our benefit is the return on aid the following year, so, and it's something that we'll, we'll probably see that last us for two to three years. And then, there'll either be a new addition or, you know, we'll cycle through something else. But we were mandated to follow their, their textbooks, so...
That would be my only concern, too, is that we buy, we have to order our textbooks ahead to have them there. They give us enough notice if they change an addition?
If they change to a newer addition, we have two to three years to change to that newer addition.
Okay. All right.
Okay, Board. You have a little...
I was going to ask about the cost of the books, but I see that you strategically avoided actually answering them.
Well, I think it's a hundred and forty-five dollars each. And I believe, what is it, seventy percent on our textbook aid?
And I was going to ask how long you think you'd get out of them, and you think you already answered that as well, so...
Our goal would be two to three years, yep.
One other question, on the presentation, you mentioned that I think the number was seventy-seven or seventy, and/or seventy-three percent of the students that were polled or questioned said that they were interested in the money management course?
Um, yes.
Were they given other options or was it just...
Nope. So, we asked them a number of questions. So, the first question we asked was, "Would you be interested in taking a Gemini course within the business department if offered?" And that was seventy-seven percent of the students said, "Yes, they would be." The second question we asked was, "What types of business courses would you be interested in taking?" And we gave them a whole list. So, if we were to offer Gemini Criminal Law or Entrepreneurship, Sports Management, are you interested? And so, we have a long list because students were able to identify multiple courses. And unfortunately, we're a little bit tied to what FLCC will, you know, offers up for that Gemini credit. And then, the third question was, "If we offered finance technology as a Gemini course, would you be interested in taking that?" And that's where seventy-three percent of the students said, "Yes."
Okay, good. And one other question I have, and will not require you to answer this, in fact, please don't, and it's really for Dr. Kelvin. But that is, it came up in the presentation and you just mentioned it again, the criminal law course and the entrepreneurship course that were approved two years ago?
Two or three, yes.
However, long ago it was. I would love to see some numbers now that it's been established for a while. How many kids are in it? How many have taken, taken you guys up on that offer, so?
Oh, no, there's one right here.
There's at least one, but I don't want to put you in the spot and, and, please, don't just, it's really a question for the administration. I'd love to see some numbers on it.
Can I bring you back some, some data on that?
Just the name change, that's it. I was just like, smoke and mirrors? I'll take it, wrap it up, it sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Marketing boy in the business department. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
How's the baby?
She's good.
She here?
She will be a year in two weeks.
Happy birthday.
So, Board, we're going to switch gears in a little bit, so we, we've talked a little about kids, our study, what's coming up, we did some pieces on our course changes. Now, we have some business items that we want to kind of work through and talk through tonight. And the first is using the support of our fiscal advisors, our folks from Fiscal Advisors, that are here with us. And so, we're going to invite them up to the table and they're going to share a little bit with us, along with Greg, about some strategies that we like to utilize, basically, around our capital project that we have just kind of been coming to closure around, basically. So, we're going to give the floor to them and with Greg, and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight.
Thank you. With us tonight, we have Ben Maslona and Judy Johnson from Fiscal Advisors. They assist us with all of our fiscal endeavors when it comes to borrowing money, capital project stuff. And we wanted to bring them here tonight to discuss with the Board. You're aware that there was a delay in completing our project. And initially, we had planned on having that done last year, so we had budgeted for a full year's worth of aid. And since we weren't able to complete that, there's going to be an impact on the aid. So, we wanted them to come tonight and just walk the Board through that so you understand exactly what the implications are and what our plan is to resolve those and deal with that change.
Greg, before we start, when you say last year, do you mean last fiscal year or last calendar year?
Last fiscal year.
Okay, so it should have been completed by June thirtieth.
Correct, correct. We actually had planned, Carla, to, we figured the District Office piece would, originally, we hoped that it would be done by April or May, and then we'd be able to do the final cost reports. Had we had them in by the end of fiscal year, this year, we would have generated a full year's worth of aid. But that, you know, the concession standing, the things we talked about, we were unable to achieve that goal. So, it will have an impact on what we budgeted and what our debt service payments will be. They're going to help explain that tonight.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, everybody, for having us here tonight. It's, it's been a while since we've been back. I think pre-referendum was last time I was out to the district, which is a good thing. I mean, things were going well, so there's no need to come out and report. But as Greg mentioned, now that things are ramping up, we like about giving a little status where we are, what impact the delay might have had, or I'll give you the good news right away, it's not really going to impact you at all. And just show you kind of what the plan is as we move forward in the next six months. So, you have a two-page handout in front of you. The first page has got some board points on it. The second page is a debt chart related to the capital project that I'll kind of go through, you know, maybe flip back a little bit, back and forth. But just to go through the first page, so the financing, all financings of capital projects is really driven by state aid because the state aid is not going to come in when you want it to. It's going to come in when you hit certain benchmarks. And the biggest benchmark of them all is finishing the final cost reports and having them completed and submitted to the state. Obviously, any delay in the project will prevent you from doing that and then so presents the aid from coming how you might have planned it pre-referendum. We actually planned for those types of situations, so the last couple of years with, with Greg's assistance, we've been borrowing on short-term obligations. So, a short-term obligation is something that, when it's due the following year, you either have to renew it or convert it to a long-term bond. But by using that strategy with the position we are in now, we're able to modify our plan accordingly, which really holds the district's budget harmless, even though you're only going to be getting a portion of the aid that we originally thought this year. You will get the aid eventually, you'll get it all eventually, but you're not going to get as much as you thought you were going to this year. So, we mentioned that there were delays in the final cost reports. The plan now is with everything resolved, is that those final cost reports will be completed by May at the latest. And I think, based on our current timeline, we'll be able to do that even quicker. But doing it in February or March or May, will that impact the timing? Just has to be done by May, that's the bottom line. Having those reports done by May will result in one-half year of building aid in this fiscal year. So, if you were to flip to the second page and just take a look at the column nine, I have it highlighted in green, you'll see there's a half a year's worth of aid coming in that year, approximately four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So, originally, we thought that was going to be eight hundred and seventy-one. Because of the delay, now it's four thirty-five. Now, as I mentioned, you will get all the aid, just a little bit different revenue stream. So, look all the way down towards the bottom. In two thousand thirty-one, I've highlighted that in green as well, you'll get that four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars back. So, you don't get it to, for fifteen years, but you get it. And what that forces us to do, it forces us to take our bonds and issue them instead of over a fifteen-year period. Basically, you're issuing over a fifteen and a half-year period. Under number two on the first page, I discussed how we stayed on the short-term bond anticipation notes, which provided us maximum flexibility. One thing, when we thought we were going to have a full year of aid in fifteen, sixteen, what you do is you budget accordingly to have a full year of debt service. So, when we originally had the budget, there was a larger principal payment that was going to be made in June of this year. Since we're not going to get the aid and we are on short-term notes, the local finance law allows us to reduce that payment to match the building aid. So, if you were to look into column four on the second page, there's a banned principal payment highlighted in yellow of two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Originally, that was about seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars when we were preparing the budget last year. So, we've reduced that amount to two eleven. And as we scroll across that two thousand sixteen line, if you were to go to column ten, there's a negative number there, and that's what we want. When we told the taxpayers we're going to do the project, we told them no tax impact, that's exactly what you have, a negative number in that column. So, we were able to reduce the banned principal payment, keep the negative local share, and hold really the district's budget completely harmless for this fiscal year. Current plan, moving forward to June, we're going to issue bonds in June to permanently finance the project. The bonds, as I mentioned, will go out to two thousand and thirty-one, which is a half a year, it's technically a full year. I call it a half year because it's a half year's worth of aid, a half year's worth of debt service. So, we'll go out to two thousand thirty-one to match the building aid flow, which is an easy fix at this point. If we had issued bonds last year, that's kind of a fixed debt instrument, once it's sold, that's it. There's your payments and basically deal with it. Because we're on the notes, we're able to modify our plan. And when we go to issue the bonds this year, there'll be no, no issue with matching the aid flow with the debt service payment, which is exactly the position we want to be in. I will, I know I went through the lap pretty quickly there, I think I hit the high points, but please, any questions, please fire away.
The action of the Federal Reserve last month will not have any impact on the interest rates from the bonds?
It's a funny thing you say that because everyone, if you have a 401K, you're probably cringing right now. But the Federal Reserve in December, they did hike the interest rate a quarter point, but on the municipal market, I will tell you, that's had little to no impact at this point. Last week, we sold a twenty-year bond for a, also called a struggling credit, and the rate was a two-point-four-four percent. And I've estimated it on your bonds at a three-fifteen, so that's roughly, you know, sixty basis points, over half a percent cushion built in. And Wayne Central Schools is a good name, it's a good credit, you usually get very good interest rates. So, it may have some impact, but I think we've built in enough cushion in this. And when I give Greg debt service figures for sixteen, seventeen, it will build in a little bit more cushion so we'll be protected.
Who says that it's fifteen years? I could be dead.
That's a very big question.
I was going to say, I'm not coming back for the raffle. I'm going to be retired, I swear. You, you can do what you want.
Are some ten or are fifteen, is that? Who picks that?
That's the, the state, actually. To gain more predictability in their revenue or their, their expense stream, really, of building aid, back in oh-one, wow, wasn't really that long ago, oh-one, oh-two, they changed the rules and they said, "Okay, you guys can do whatever you want for your financing, but we're going to pay your aid over fifteen years, or twenty, or thirty, depending on the type of work you do." So, that kind of turned everything completely around. And now, we look at the aid first and then figure out the debt. But that's, it's an arbitrary, random thing that the state came up with and...
The minimum is fifteen?
Yeah, it's based on, they went to basing it on the life of the asset. It's thirty years if it's a brand-new building, it's...
Twenty years for...
If you do additions that are more than the reconstruction side, if you were to do a big addition and spend, I don't know, five million dollars on that and a million dollars on the existing, that would land you in a twenty-year aid flow.
But repairs and...
Regular reconstruction's fifteen.
And before the change, the aid stream was based on how you borrowed, and the state didn't have those numbers at budget time. And districts go on, could go on to a large, a large borrowing, which would affect building it, the state had to come up with. So, to bring predictability to it, they changed that and they allowed everybody to refund what outstanding debt you had so that you could line up the aid, the new aid schedule with the debt payments.
Yes, they, at the same time, they restructured their aid flow for your existing debt, which created nightmares throughout the state. You can imagine, if your debt doesn't run out at the same time your aid is, that's a big problem. So, we refinanced practically everything in the state.
And if you want to offer a course, I'll be, you know, come back as a guest speaker, that'd be great.
I want to take that finance course. That would be great. That would have been great.
So, you were expecting the unexpected and you had us on short-term bond anticipation notes, probably just based on experience, knowing that nothing goes the way it's planned?
Right. The project at the vote, generally, it tends to look, not all the time, a lot different, but sometimes it can be substantially different than when you voted on it. So, we like to, our methodology in general is to keep everything as flexible as possible until we're definite into what the aid stream is going to be, and then we convert long-term.
Okay. Good, good. Nice job, thank you.
Other questions, Board, or focus, or... Good? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And Board, the next time you'll see them come back is towards the end of the year when we're ready to go to permanent financing. Ben will definitely be back. I don't know if Judy will be coming, but Ben will definitely be back to talk about the process.
You're not going to be retired by...
I'm going to be, no. No, but I am going to enroll in those courses. So, I'm going to have to move here, I guess.
It's a great district.
Be careful what you wish for, though.
It's a great district. Everybody wants to live here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Greg, basically.
Okay, so, Board, one more piece that Greg and I would like to do now, we want to kind of work through our capital portion of the budget. Let me join Greg over here.
Greg, you're busy answering.
At least a couple, yeah. I'm not talking quite a bit on the phone.
And also, the ability, Carla, I see them at monthly meetings, which helps.
So, Board, we're just going to now kind of go through our capital portion of the budget. And just to kind of share before we get started, the capital portion of the budget, what we are proposing is really a very minimal increase this year. We're looking at a point-three percent increase for this portion of the budget, which equates to fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for the next upcoming school year budget. Excuse me, I should say over the fif, sixteen, seventeen budget.
No, increase over this year's budget.
Oh, excuse me, over this year's budget. I'm sorry, I wrote the slide and I apologize. Okay, so, we're looking at again, a point-three percent increase over this year's budget. Okay. Some of the highlights, really, that we are going to kind of go through a little bit here, that we're most, you know, concerned about is our operations. We, the big thing here in terms of why we're asking for the point-three increase is really for custodial salaries. Every year, our salaries go up and we need to be able to pay for those increases. And then, we have some decreases, though, in our utilities, in terms of our projections that we received so far. In terms of maintenance, we're looking at some decrease in local facilities plan, planning work because, again, we just have a capital project, so some of the things won't need to be done, so you'll see some decreases there. And then, there's some decreases also supplies again because we just had a capital project that was just completed. In terms of debt service, we're looking for some increases in serial bond principal and interest and then decrease in bond anticipation notes with principal and interest. And then, one of the things that you'll see not only in this section of the budget, but as we go through the other sections, is this sprinkling of information and support that we'll need around security. One of the number-one things that came out in our recent budget forum and also in our and also in our budget survey, is that the community wanted to make sure that we're continuing to keep our eye on security. And so, we're going to ask for really three things in this portion. One is a rapider system. And we talked before a little bit about that at my entry plan outcomes report. And what that system does is it allows us to, basically, in each school, there'll be a little box that you slide IDs into, and it does a quick check to make sure that your building really has a chance to just check to see if there are any background issues on some of the folks who will be entering, on all folks who enter the buildings. This system is used at many schools already around the state, many schools in this region. Newark is one example of it in our BOSEs. Webster has the system. Pittsburgh has the system. A number of districts have the system already in place. We know that the cost will be about $6,000 per building to put this in, and that is a BOSEs-adeable piece. But we know our initial setup cost, software cost, you know, just the equipment, it'll cost us about $6,000 per school. And so, we've put that into this portion. And then, we have a program that we're working with, which is called Rapid Responder. It's a depository of security information that we will need to really work with, to get information in. And what it does is it helps us to be able to respond much more quickly, much more efficiently, in case of a security concern that might arise. Rapid Responder is a system that's being used, or that will be used by many of our districts in our Wayne County and BOSEs. There are a number of them, at least 11 or 12, that are all working together to make sure that this system is in place. And the goal is to make sure that we can respond quickly if there is an issue, and really to help us be safer in terms of security. And then, the last piece that we haven't included is also, we'd like to have some additional cameras around the building. We have a camera replacement plan in place. Over the next five years, we have a number of cameras that are being replaced. They're old, some of them are older and need to be replaced so that we get a better, much more clearer picture from them. And then, we're putting in a couple more in some of our buildings. So, really, that's the highlight in terms of why we're asking for that 0.3% more in this year. So, now Greg's going to kind of go down each of the line items so that you can kind of see what we're talking about. Please know that this information will also be posted on our website so that our community and public will have full access to it. We have it already on the website in our board package, but we'll put it up again so that everyone has it and they can see this card as well. Okay?
Greg, I didn't include those in the question.
Yeah, okay. So, Board, I passed out to you copies of the line-by-line for the capital portion. You know, it's difficult to show it on the screen because there's so much information, and it comes out very small. We did have copies available for the audience, and I gave one to each of you. The one thing you will notice, this year, I've added another year's worth of information on there. In the past, we used to show you the current budget for 1516 with the adjusted budget for 1516, our expenditures to date, encumbrances to date, and what we were proposing for next year. This year, I've also added a previous year's, a year's worth of information. So, you see 1415 budget and expenditures, as well as everything I just described. So, it really gives you a little bit more information, more of a trend. You know, you can read going across the report, you know, where we were in 2014, 15, and what we're proposing for the 1616 school year. And when you look at the first area, which is the operations, so operating our school buildings, back in 1415, the budget was $1,865.560. And tonight, we're proposing for next year, $1,718,670. So, you can see that number has actually gone down over the past couple of years with our energy performance projects. We've been able to, we're a little bit more energy efficient. We've been able to reduce some of our utility costs. So, even though we have contractual increases built in there based on our negotiated agreement with the CSEA employees, we're actually able to hold the line there. The current budget is $1,709. So, that portion of the budget's only up about $9,000. And as I stated, natural gas, electric, we've been able to lower those numbers. And the balance of the increases fall under the salary lines. We haven't added any staff, same amount of staff that we currently have under the operations section. The second part of this is the...
On natural gas, electricity, Greg, do we bid that through BOSEs, or do we...
Yes. Yes, as bid, as a cooperative through BOSEs. And then, we lock into pricing...
How long are we locked in?
For a year. For a year. And BOSEs has actually a specialist that helps guide the school districts through that. You know, we have the choice of going with a fixed price, similar to what you have at Home Rock. Fixed price versus the variable.
Take your chances.
Yep. But typically...
From your seat, it makes sense to lock in.
Yeah. The gentleman that has worked at BOSEs, he used to be an ERGNI employee, so very knowledgeable in this area. And that's a cooperative with you the BOSEs. Any other questions on the first part?
Yeah. Greg, you have telephone 20 grand and BOSEs telephone 25 grand.
Yes.
What is the difference?
Some of the, Carla, some of our lines go through BOSEs. So, it's paid under, paid under the BOSEs bill, and some of them were billed directly. So, some of the trunk lines are done through BOSEs. So, we get aid on them. So, it's split between the two codes.
And then, where is what Memphis talked about on here for the increase for all the security things?
That'll be in this next part coming down.
Okay.
So, in the maintenance piece, this is the portion where...
Supply?
Right. Under the, actually, Carla, under the 412 code, the building, equipment, and repair contract area.
Oh, wow.
We have $181,050 proposed. Some of it, you'll see there. Some of it will also appear in the program portion of the budget, under the technology piece that Barfield is responsible for. And she works through Joe's office. You know, some of our camera replacements in there as well. So, it's split in different areas of the budget.
Kind of just as I said before, we'll be sprinkling it out throughout all different parts of the budget. So, some will come out of this, some will come out of some others. Okay? It's going to go down line by line.
Yeah. And once again, you can see that pretty much this area of the budget, we're once again, holding the line. The current budget is, for this year, is $784,070. Next year's proposed is $776,600. In this area of the budget, the salaries are pretty much, even though there's a contractual increase, we've been able to hold the line. There was some turnover in the staff. So, through some attrition, we did not actually have to raise the maintenance salary code. And you'll see under the, that 412 code, that's really the portion of our budget where we do, we call it our local facilities plan. So, things that our maintenance department's going to do in the buildings, Bob Miller and now Bob Fusa, they meet with the building principals and discuss the needs of the buildings, as well as taking into consideration the information from the survey and what Dr. Calvin talked about with his entry plan results. And all that's built into our local facilities plan. And those are smaller projects that we can take on that don't require capital construction and we can do in-house. And along with that, you'll see a, the maintenance supply code is actually down a little bit. But overall, once again, you can see that this area of the budget is pretty much holding firm with where we currently are.
What is the health and safety?
Health and safety is...
508.
It's things that we do through BOSEs. There's a health and safety committee that our people are part of. So, sometimes there's supplies associated with that.
Training.
Training. Sometimes, like posters, for instance, we put up our seasonal posters now.
Bloodborne packages.
Please be careful, parking lots, there's snow, seasonal trip hazards, you know, those types of things.
I'm thinking the cameras on the safety. You know, but it's not in there.
No, it's not in that line.
It's in 512.
Yes, that's right. All right. So, any questions on that portion?
I was just looking at the architect fees. We haven't used any this year, but we just budget just in case we have a catastrophe.
Yes. And actually, those fees, Carla, because we're doing the building condition survey, those fees will be spent because of the building condition survey that's required. Initially, it was due by January 15, and they pushed the due date back to the end of June. But we're just, we're pretty much done with our building condition survey. So, we'll be submitting that, and there'll be architectural costs associated with that. But that survey information will also be used with the study that the superintendent just shared with you before his presentation.
So, as you look at part three of the study, it talks about using, utilizing the architect and choosing, selecting architects, using that person along with Rick Timms. We will need their support over this year and next year. Something in there for sure.
Every year, it's a little, it connects.
It's all good.
Another 10 years, you'll get it. I mean, we. I mean, we.
You're right. That's why I'm not there.
Carla, by 2031, when the debt expires?
Will we, we'll call you back, Greg?
Okay. So, moving on, the next area is refund of real property tax. We just budget typically about $500 for miscellaneous adjustments that are identified through the Office of Rural Property. And you can see there that in 1415 and 1516, you can see expenses that are fairly sizable. But please note that those are tax cert cases that have been resolved. And we have to pay for it. When we say we're going to pay for it out of the reserve, the reserves are part of the general fund. So, we pay for it out of this budget code, and then we transfer money from the tax reserve code into the general fund to fund that expense.
Right.
So, it appears that it's over budget, but there's a corresponding revenue offset. So, attractive supply, and then the other one was...
Gannan.
No, there was the one last year that we never knew about.
It was back in behind.
Oh, the factory over on Dean Parkway.
Yeah. I can't think of the name, but it actually went to Gannan at first. Anyway, so you see $500 budgeted there. And then, if you move down, then we get to our debt service piece. And once again, you see principal and interest payments budgeted for our serial bonds. And as we discussed, currently, our budget is $1,085 for serial bond payments. Once we go to permanent financing, as we discussed tonight for our recently completed project, we have to add about $600,000 in principal payments there, a corresponding increase in the interest payments. But you'll see a corresponding decrease if we go down to the next lines, the bond anticipation notes and the interest for bond anticipation notes. Currently, there's $837,000 budgeted for that. That, we will no longer need that. So, that's been shifted up to the permanent financing line. And then, if you flip it over on the next page, you'll see interest tan. Tan stands for a tax anticipation note. In 1415, we budgeted $10,000. This year, we have nothing in there, but I've thrown the $10,000 back in based on our recent fiscal stress score. Not sure, we've never been in a position where we need to borrow money. Typically, our revenues tend to be more front-loaded with the tax collection process. But as we continue to move forward, not knowing where we're going with Gannan, in case we have to do that, there'd be some interest costs if we borrow against future tax revenue. So, I thought it was a good idea, then talking with the superintendent to put that back in as a safety piece. And then, installment, purchase, principal and interest, that is the debt service on our performance contracts. And that line is pretty steady. You see a slight change in there. The principal payments are up a little bit. Next year, the interest is down. But overall, the whole area of the budget is, the superintendent described, we're only recommending a $15,180 increase or a 0.3%. So, we very much tried to hold the line in this first part of the budget.
So, any questions on that, Board?
No.
Our goal is to, you know, continue to keep in mind operation needs, maintenance needs, debt service, and the piece around security. So, I think we're able to do a pretty good job there in terms of keeping it pretty low. 0.3 is, I think, a pretty good job. All right?
Greg, when do you find out when your people did pay their taxes? Do they don't let it go by the county rule and all?
Actually, know that already, Carla.
So, but the county pays us?
Right. After the end of October, any tax bills that remain outstanding, we turn those over, those names and that dollar amount to the Wayne County. And the county pays us. So, they make us hold for that amount of money. And then, they re-leverage that onto the town and county tax bill that taxpayers recently got in January. And the reason they do that is because they have more leverage. If you don't pay that bill, they can come and take your house. So, there's a little bit more incentive for people to...
Is that a state law?
Yes.
Because I'm like looking at nothing center, you know, like looking around the court. They never paid.
Yeah, but that was probably under a pilot agreement, which goes through an IDA, which is kind of a different set of rules. I'm sure there was some kind of a tax with that.
Okay. All right. Before we go on to Board Business, I know we have a number of seniors and at least one junior who are here tonight. Can I get a show of, can I ask, how many of you kids have to do homework yet tonight?
In terms, next week.
Yeah, I've got a couple finals.
Given that you have homework to do, we will excuse you at this time. But first, I want to take this opportunity, I know we have at least two members, two student members in the group tonight who are part of athletic teams, this fall, that won academic scholar awards. Brittany and Clint, just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate you on your teams winning scholar athlete awards. And if there are other students in the audience who were members of other teams, I apologize for not knowing that you were part of those teams.
What team?
Football. We got a...
You also were a scholar athlete award. We're very proud of those awards. So, at this time, if you want to come up, we'll sign your papers and get you out of here.
This is your half-year course, and you waited so this week to do this?
I did the first one.
Any word of this, Greg, what's going on?
Put me look at this.
Any of these guys right here, starting this way?
How's it going?
Okay. Is any of the...
I need these guys, y'all.
From this gentleman to that lady.
I would too, but...
I think I have my pen, but I made it.
You too.
Happy night.
Hi, guys.
Can you just go to bathroom, the red light, and walk there? Oh, he was here, though? He just walked in. I like that.
Point whatever.
What's your name? And we're laughing.
Because it's so wild.
I am.
You don't feel it?
I am.
You do have to be alive.
Don't worry about it.
So, you guys are some places.
You're on the streets.
The staff have a quality of access to that.
You'll actually know where you're going.
Really?
I have to.
Yeah, wow.
You have this many.
Yeah.
You don't understand how the...
Yeah. Under Ford Business, the first item is to designate vehicles as surplus property. Greg has provided us with a list of the vehicles that are, so that's maybe, can I get a motion? Pam, a second. Any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor?
I hope you feel that way.
Thank you.
Hundred bucks or whatever it sounds for.
Next is first policy reading of Code of 61110, Code of Ethics and a Policy 5675, Student Rating Information System. Can I get a motion to approve? Carla, a second. Phil, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, the second policy reading, 4211, the organizational chart of management responsibility to be incorporated, Policy 42110. Can I get a motion to that effect? Pam, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And then, to approve the administrator's contract, which would extend their contract to the school years 2017, 18, 2018, and 19. Can I get a motion to that effect? Pam, second for Carrie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Look at them all smile.
The, to approve the comprehensive study contract with pass and SES, the study teams. Can I get a motion to approve those contracts? Carrie, a second. Tim, any discussion? I think it's good work on the part of our superintendent to have these contracts approved and to have these outside experts come in and take a look at our operations and our efficiencies. And I think that's money well spent.
I know. It looks like a lot of money.
But would the BOSEs aid?
But if they find something that saves us, it's not just for that year, it's ongoing.
Right. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Opposed? And last, and I hope these are the, next to the very last, to approve change orders, GC 54 and GC 55. Can I get a motion to approve these? Phil or Dennis?
Sure.
Phil. Any discussion? I was a short arm myself. All in favor?
Amen.
Under the consent agenda, we did amend the agenda earlier, but under the consent agenda, we forgot to, or I forgot to remove the board handbook in the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to remove the board handbook? Carrie, a second. Pam? Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda as amended, or all in favor of removing?
Can we discuss?
Handbook? No, not in the consent agenda. All in favor of removing it? Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended?
I just have one question.
Can on the consent? Can on the consent?
Oh, Matt, I make it?
Yeah. I can tell you what it is.
Yeah, that's all I want.
It's four hundred dollars for like the Lego League.
From? Okay, I'd just like to have that. I'd just like to have that out loud.
Committee reports. Communication, chair.
Nothing really, we had our first community conversation last week. Four people from the community showed up. Had a good discussion. It's made it in, it's on our time allotment. And our next meeting will be, whatever the next Thursday, the board meeting, I don't know the day cap.
So Larry, something.
Before we go to policy, the superintendent has reminded me I'd made a mistake. I've got to ask for approval of the consent agenda. Can I get approval? Any emotion?
Thank you. We had a motion, just forgotten. Audit. Matt?
Yeah, we met a week ago, and the major thing that came out of the meeting is there is no February meeting. Our next meeting will be March tenth. And I was only able to get on the internet to get any of those, but I'll have a more comprehensive thing next week, since we have some time to get...
Policy committee.
We have not had a meeting since our last public meeting. The next one is February eleventh at five o'clock, and I will be absent from, from that night. I'm traveling. So Dennis will be the acting chair for that.
Under Board President comments, if you remember at the last board meeting, we had the outside auditors here, and you talked with us at great length about our reserves and about the need to hold on to, to our reserve going forward. And if you saw today's newspaper, you saw that the state aid cap has been set at point zero-one-two of one percent, twelve-hundredths of one percent is the cap going forward. So the very fact that our operations came in tonight at point-three gives us an idea of how important it is to be, to be paying attention to our budget going forward. Just something for us to be thinking about, point zero-one-two, twelve-hundredths of one percent.
I think there's going to be a few people losing sleep over that, too.
Yes, yes. Seven hundred school districts, plus I don't know how many municipalities. We do have a need to go back into executive session. As a Board of Education, we believe very strongly in the need of the school district to evaluate people's performance and to give them feedback, that's one of the ways to improve student performance. So we do have a need to go back into executive session to give feedback to our superintendent. So can I get a motion to go into executive session? Pam, as Secretary, all in favor of going into executive session? opposed? Folks, we will be coming back out into public session, but we will not be taking any more action. You are welcome to stick around, though, to see us in your room if you'd like. Otherwise, have a good evening.